Also, not, not in the offer. They did not respond favorably to that. They wanted to stay with what they have. Just by way of, in terms of longstanding, in terms of us looking at this property. When we originally acquired this property, we also approached the owner of the property to the east about gaining some kind of cross-access, even building a bridge over, over the open river right there. And they were not receptive to that either. So, in all of our attempts to be able to gain any kind of cross-access for this, for this property, or to make this property larger, or make it a little bit more substantial development, we were not granted any kind of favorable response from the two adjacent property owners.
Any, Alderman Leslie?
I have one question on that pork chop turning lane. How are your trucks going to get in there? You know, we're sure receiving, they're going to have to come off Irving and go into the front of that building, right?
Well, what they're going to do is, ultimately, they're going to try to get up.
Sorry, you need to use the portable microphone if you're going to walk away from the podium?
I'm sorry. What the trucks are going to do is, is they're going to try to get down to this end, okay? And I say try, because I'm going to present to you how they're going to do it. They do not back into this like you would see at a truck dock. It's a procedure where they unload in the parking lot and wheel the merchandise in. But what they're going to do is, they're going to make that turn and come into this area and then back around to get down here, and then they'll go out and turn right.
And how, how big are these trucks? Because I'll tell you one thing, to look at this plan here, it's going to be a tight turn for a truck to make it in there.
It is a tight turn.
And the other concern I have is, it's the main intersection, you know, for us wherever, with the stop and go light there. And I understand you, you made the commitment by moving the windows to the front now, and that's your entranceway for the people to come in. And now I have a safety concern with that, because I thought we, I thought you guys were pretty close to making agreement with TCF Bank about going in that, out that way. To me, that turn may be too tight for a truck to come in there. I'm afraid that that pork chop, or whatever you want to call it, is going to be destroyed and end up coming out, because you don't have that much for in and out. I mean, that's my concern right now.
Alderman Subak?
Do you have the ability to move the ingress, negress further west?
I'm sorry, would you please repeat?
Do you have the ability to move the ingress, negress further west?
Further west. I don't know, we can move it probably some distance. I don't know that we can move it a great distance. Do you have any feel for that?
There's nothing that it's lining.
It, it's not lining up against another access across the street, so I, I believe we, we probably could.
I mean, the idea is to get it further away as possible from Addison Road and Irving Park Road, so. But my other questions were, number one, how much frontage did you have along Irving Park Road? How much frontage, was it 75 feet?
I believe that that's, that's in the neighborhood about correct, yes.
And does anybody know the distance between the, the building and the building to the west? Because I know our code does allow to put, put it real close to lot line. Do you know what the distance between your new building and the building to the left, to the west?
To the west, I believe it's, to the property line, I believe, is about, I want to say about five feet.
No. Right. Which again, I mean, I, they're, they're playing under the current code, the way we allow it. Yeah, I think they've addressed many of the issues that were brought up last time. Last time they were putting one of those, the blue bomb building in there, and they've gone away from that. Even though you're going to regular brick, it's not going to be blue, I'm assuming.
That's correct.
You know, they're not changing the ditch, which was a concern, and they're going to be generating, you know, large amounts of sales tax from the space. In a perfect world, as I said before, we'd rather have a, you know, a bookstore there or something, but the reality is, this is a store that wants to go there, and it's going to generate a lot of sales tax for a 75-foot frontage on Irving Park Road. And I think that, and we have to be careful, we asked for it, because we're looking for redevelopment along Irving Park Road. It's a vacant piece of property right now, so we're, we're not getting any sales tax dollars from this, and they're making the changes to the aesthetics of the building to make it work there. With respect to the traffic problems, anything we put there is going to cause traffic problems. If you put a Krispy Kreme doughnut or Starbucks there, that's going to be traffic problems. I think that this extra use is going to have less traffic than maybe some retail uses. Last time at the meeting, you had mentioned that you were willing to restrict when your trucks do deliveries and drop-offs. Are you still willing to do that?
Well, I need to clarify that. The, the delivery trucks-
Oh, corporate came down on you on that a little bit?
Yeah, they came down on me on that a little bit. Now, the, the issue, to be specific, is that the, the over-the-road trucks, the ones that are a problem turning in, we'll, we'll work with staff on that turning radius issue, and also the location of the, of the entrance. It kind of goes hand in hand with that, but we'll work with staff on that issue. Those over-the-road trucks do, do make their deliveries early in the morning or late at night. And we have a second type of truck that is on-site, and that is two delivery vehicles, normally per store, that are making deliveries in and out every day. And those, those do run all, all of the business hours that the store is open. And corporate says that I can't restrict those. I can restrict the, the over-the-road truck to off-peak hours.
The second truck, what's the size? Is that a box truck, or is that still a-
No, those are pickup trucks. Those are the typical white Napa pickup trucks.
Now, the other ones that are over the road, those are semi-trucks?
Those are semi-trucks, that's correct.
So, you could restrict the semis when they go in the hours?
Yes.
Thank you.
Alderman Tommy, did you have-
Yeah, my, my question is, or my concern, okay, is with pork chop, what direction are they going to come in? And hear me out, what direction are they coming from into Wooddale? If they're coming from the east, that means they're going to have to go further down Irving Park Road, find like Georgetown Shopping Center or something like that, and, and turn around, and then come back down, okay, and then in, into, to be able to get in. So, because they can't cut across, there's no way they can cut across on, on a pork chop like that if they're coming from the east. So unless they're coming from the west, which I'm not sure what direction they'll come, be coming from-
I, I can give you a partial answer. The information that I have is they're coming from Naperville, and then they'll be making a circuit to another location. And so, I assume that that's coming from the southwest, and they'll be heading east from there. And I, I don't know that that's-
Okay, and logically, because they can't come down Bloomingdale Road, they would have to go all the way out to Irving Park Road and then circle back through Itasca to come back down, which, from a driving perspective, would not make sense, okay? So what they would have to do is, they would have to probably come down Lake Street to Addison Road, and then Addison Road down, okay, to Irving, and then Irving down to Georgetown Shopping Center and do a U-turn, and then come out. Because that-
I really can't comment on that, I don't have-
Okay, well, that still is one, one of my concerns, okay? Is that, I don't care how far you put it back, I mean, the little shopping center that's directly to the west of you over there, that in itself is already a nightmare when, when people are trying to pull in and out of there to go to the restaurant, because it is so close, that, their entranceway is so close to the side street that's over there, Dalewood. It would have been nice if these people would have agreed, okay, to at least link up the two parking lots, so you could have, you could close off that one on their side and do one entranceway into the shopping center. And, you know, we had a consultant several years ago said, one of the biggest problems along Irving Park Road is that you have too many entrances in and out of too, too many buildings, and that the way to solve that is to combine, is, is to get into that where you can combine these little strip malls and things into having only one, you know, way to get in and out versus multiple, because the more you have, the more creates a problem. And I don't know, you know, maybe there is a way you guys can go back and work with these guys, you know? Maybe there's something, maybe the city can talk with them, I don't know.
Well, we're only able to control that to a certain degree.
Understood.
But I want to make sure that y'all realize that we're talking about one truck.
Yeah, I'm not even talking about just the truck, I'm talking about just the people-
Just general traffic.
Yeah, just, just the traffic in general. I mean, you know what, the truck, yeah, one truck a day, I don't care how he gets there, he knows, he can't come from the east and turn in there, bottom line. He's going to have to find a way to get in, you know, to get in there. But the overall, you know, the overall traffic in and out, I see it every day, okay? Just down the street from there, a little bit to the east, we have a Burger King, we have one of these pork chops. There are signs all over the place that say, you, when you're pulling out, no left turn. And these people do it anyway, okay? And we cannot, where the city's not in a position to have police stationed there all the time, you know, to, to monitor that. Now, you're even closer to that, to the intersection, so, I mean, again, if there would be a way that we could combine the two and have one entranceway over there, I mean, I probably would support it, but I don't know. Right now, I'm not sold on it the way it is.
I'd just like to say, and, you know, sort of reiterate my point before, we've approached this property owner several times, and, and they are not receptive to, to any kind of, any kind of a deal, either being an easement or some kind of combination of the shopping centers. And they, they're, they're, they're small, they're, they're, they're small owners, they're a small tightly-knit family, and we have not been able to make any headway with them. We've approached them several times. You know, we have a commercial piece of property on this street, we're restricting our access to try to eliminate movements out of here. I think that we've, you know, I think that in terms of, you know, some kind of commercial use that's going to be able to go here in the future, this is a very less intensive use than other uses that could be in this property. And I think that on balance here, you know, you've got a, you know, you've got an owner or a future owner here that really wants to work with the city of Wooddale and trying to meet your concerns. Can they meet every one of your concerns? Well, they, unfortunately, they can't, because they can't control all the parcels on this, on this street in Irving Park. But in terms of, in terms of traffic, and we can have our traffic consultant, you know, talk about this in, you know, in terms of a minute, you know, this is as good of an option as, as we can get. And we did have full access approved by, by IDOT here, but the owner, you know, future owner Napa was willing to restrict their access here. And we have one truck per day, it's not a very intensive traffic, traffic use, and it's going to be, you know, very nice, very aesthetically pleasing, you know, very good asset to the community.
Alderman Chalky?
Yes, I have two questions, if I may. When you say the delivery trucks, the pickup trucks, are you talking about delivering to other Napa stores or to the consumer, or what?
There are other businesses that would be consumers.
Not other Napa stores?
No, sir. It's not, we're not distributing-
So, this won't be a central distribution point?
No, that's the Naperville.
Okay, and the other thing I'd like to ask about is the stormwater aspect of it. This lot, I'd like to ask Gary, this lot from the west to the east slopes dramatically. It slopes down probably four, five, maybe six feet down to Squaw Creek, which is an integral, important part of our stormwater system. I see, you know, where is this building going to be? Is it going to be the base of it as high as the western part of the lot? And, which means you'll have to build up this whole lot and fill it in, or where's, what is the elevation part of it? And you've got the parking spaces, and it doesn't show here what, what stops, what's at the end of the parking spaces. On the other side, you have the bank which has stone, a stone wall there. Do you just have a, a very quick dip down into the creek over there, or is that going to be sufficient to handle it during a storm?
There's curb and gutter that's along the wall, and then it's a, I believe it's a three-to-one or four-to-one slope down to existing grade outside of the floodplain, above the floodplain elevation.
Three-to, three-to-one or four-to-one?
Uh, slope. It's a meaning in four feet away from me, one foot up, another four feet away, another foot up. So, eight-foot horizontal, two-foot vertical, for instance.
So, you're talking probably six feet higher on one side?
The finished floor of the Napa building is, will be lower than the strip mall to the west, because the existing property is, is lower, so we're-
How far lower is, will it be?
Uh, I think it's about two feet, finished floor differential.
Okay, and then we still have about, what, four or five foot down to the Squaw Creek area?
We're pitching across the parking lot, drainage across the parking lot to the eastern curb line, and then, like I'm saying, the changing grade down at the three, three-to-one, four-to-one slope down to existing grade, which is around about 81, so.
So, you're saying that the whole parking lot will be sloped as the ground is sloped now? I understand what you're saying.
Yes, in the, in the same general direction, yes.
But how much? The same amount as the ground is now, or where's the difference going to be made up? I, I'm not sure, this doesn't really show.
The steeper, the steeper grade's being made up east of the eastern curb line, between the, the curb line and the existing ground that's just west of the creek.
Now, is that just going to be from the, evidently you'll have concrete curbs like that the car should pull through?
There's concrete curb, B612 curb and gutter, you know, six-inch-high curb.
On the east side of the parking lot?
Right.
Okay, then that slope beyond that?
Behind it, yes.
What I'm worried about is, for instance, that on the right-hand side of this diagram, the second tree up, the creek comes quite close to the edge of the parking lot. Are we going to, when, when we have a heavy rainstorm, are we going to be washing away that area and have it collapse, or what's going to hold it back if it's going to be such a steep grade there?
Well, there's a couple, the water doesn't sheet over the curb at all locations. There's a couple spots that are going to be where the, the stormwater would go, the parking lot will be sloped in different directions to direct stormwater out at a couple locations that'll be-
I'm talking about the water coming down the creek, though. Because that creek increases greatly when we have a heavy-
We're not filling the floodplain, so for a 100-year storm event, that existing ground topography right now is being maintained as it stands today. So you could have a 100-year storm event, and the, the ground looks the same through there, so it'll function as it does today.
That's going to be a fairly severe slope beyond the parking lot, then, down to the creek.
At a three-to-one slope, and in that area, what we would probably recommend is that that area then be replanted with more of native vegetation, because it is a riparian environment, and it's meant to remain in its native state. So Kentucky bluegrass off the back of the curb is probably not appropriate there. You want to try and keep that, you know, as native as you can, plus the native grasses will help to filter some of the runoff coming off the parking lot. A three-to-one on a commercial site is not like a three-to-one in a residential backyard. A three-to-one on a commercial site is, is fairly common.
So we don't need another brick wall?
You're asking, you're asking very detailed vinyl engineering questions, which I, I can't answer tonight, but, you know, they've already said that, that the finished floor from Napa is going to be lower than the existing shopping center to the west.
Which it already is, anyway.
Then the parking lot's going to be, remember, the parking lots will be down the barrier curb, so that's going to be another six inches lower. Then the parking lot's going to slope towards the east.
Right.
And then you're going to have the three-to-one slope past the curb over there. So that, they're going to make up their grade as they go, go to the east. And if you recall, that, that lot today is actually fairly flat, but then once it gets to the creek, it kind of dives off.
No, it's not really, it slopes the whole width of the lot, I think.
Well, but fairly constant. I mean, it's not a very steeping slope, sloping lot. There's a fairly steep drop-off from the, from the shopping center, then it's generally fairly flat, obviously sloping eastward, and then there's another drop-off when you get, once it gets to the creek, which is kind of like what they're proposing. From the engineering standpoint, I'm, those are questions that, that will be addressed during the engineering process, and I, I'm, I'm not concerned-
But if it's approved now, and, and the engineering later on says, well, we can't really do it, what are they going to do? I, I don't, you know-
I would assume that they've gone through at least enough steps to verify that they can, you know, make the engineering work on the site.
You would assume.
Well, I, it's, at this point, I mean-
We've already, your, your other not city, or, you know, your city consultant that's not city staff, Bennison Associates, they, we received a couple review letters already, and they've reviewed it, I believe, twice, if not three times, so.
Alderman Subak?
Even though you're, you're talking about one semi-truck, it's still, just from the, unfortunately, there's no dimensions between the parking lot, I still don't, I agree with Dave, I, I don't see how you're going to be able to turn that truck around. And I, I think that, you will, but hold on. I think that all the concessions you made on the building are great, and I think that, you know, there's enough other locations, if you're really, you know, welcome you to Wooddale, there is enough other crap along Irving Park Road on 50-foot lot, or 75-foot lots where this would work, and not have the water issues, and maybe not have the issues of such a tight turnaround, and also not have the issue of Addison Road right there with the truck, unless Gary can enlighten me on how the trucks are going to be able to turn around in there.
As part of their CAD software, when they do the design, that there's a module, a real common module called Auto Turn. An Auto Turn just graphically represents the movement of vehicles. As part of their review process, we simply require that they submit an Auto Turn exhibit, which demonstrates that the vehicle we're talking about, which I don't know specifically what length trailer they've got on the, you know, tractor-trailer combination, whatever combination they run, they have to demonstrate that that combination of vehicle can come in and negotiate the site. That can be simply part of the engineering review process, and if they can't demonstrate that that vehicle can negotiate the site, then the issue is, is resolved. They have to go to a shorter, you know, like a, maybe a straight truck or something. So, that, that's, that's the first part, is part of the engineering, you can address the, the traffic flow. The other one is the cross-access. Today, this developer is, is trying to gain cross-access from properties to the east and to the west. 10 years from now, when the property to the west or to the east maybe redevelops, they might be saying they're going to try and gain cross-access from this property, if you follow me. So today, as part of their plating process, they have to do a plat consolidation. That's, again, one thing we're going to require would be that this property already dedicate the cross-access easements, so that the next guy down won't have to, I mean, it'll already be on this plat, it'll already be there, so that when the future comes, we will have those, those cross-access easements in place.
Alderman Pyzek?
I was only going to ask the same question Alderman Subak just asked, but I would think that the, if Gary is right, if this auto diagram thing is going to work, but the way it looks now, I drove some of these at one time, short ones for an excavator, I could see trucks backing back out onto Irving Park Road, and that's not going to work.
Alderman Tommy?
I'm going to throw my two cents in now. I think, correct me if I'm wrong, gentlemen, but you did say that the way the truck is going to come in, they would make the right turn in, they would pull into the lot over towards the west side, and then they would back up, all the way back around the building, all the way back to the, to the back of the building, correct? Okay. So, okay, thank you.
Okay, again, Mayor, you have a comment?
Just for clarification, isn't your site like 150 by 220? Isn't it three 50-foot lots that you're seeking to consolidate?
I'd have to check.
I believe you're correct, it is three lots, seven lots.
Okay, second comment I have is for Roger. It looks like on the bottom of the lot, on the far south side, there's a 10-foot utility easement. I noticed they're putting the parking lot on the utility easement. I don't know if that's a stormwater drainage easement, but I presume that you can't fill in an easement.
That is the required easement, but that particular portion there, I don't think that that, that's going to be a problem with, with that particular dimension. In other words, shortening that up so that they're not within that easement area. That's a, I believe, a minor-
So it's part of the plan review, you'd have them back that off?
Certainly.
And then just a third question, just for purpose of clarification, isn't the only thing before us tonight is lot consolidation, and whether the council will or will not allow an auto parts store in a B2 zoning district?
Well, it's the special, the special use associated with it, as well as the lot consolidation, because they're turning the three into one.
But I mean, that's the point, that's what we're here for tonight, is whether we do or do not grant the special use.
Correct, correct.
Okay, comment, something that I brought up in, in the other meeting, and I still feel the same about it. In your demographics, when you did your study on can the city and surrounding area support a third auto parts store, I had the opportunity to talk to one of the auto stores today, and they were saying the type of business you do is exactly what they do, in that they deliver auto parts, which is Lee Auto, and Auto Zone primarily works with or deals to individuals who work on their cars themselves. They seem to have a pretty good arrangement when one does not have a part that somebody needs or whatever, they go back and forth to each other, they'll send Auto Zone, they'll send them to Lee, and Lee, in turn, would send them to Auto Zone. Lee formerly was Mark Auto, had been in, in business in Wooddale for 20-some years. I feel that we owe some degree of loyalty to our existing businesses, and we need to be good stewards. This is a piece of property that could be prime with the right choice of retail or business going in there. Personally, I would love to see Fanny May Candy come back. That was ideal for that corner, I believe they had great sales and everything. I, I still don't believe a third auto part store business is what we really need in Wooddale. I think we have that, I think we need to look for something else that would serve our public in a better way. Further, Ken? Alderman Subak?
One request, Roger, you, or Gary, you had talked about the cross-easements. I think that if this was approved, we'd have to, as part of the approval, we'd have to require enough room in the back to grant a future cross-easement to another piece of property, as well as if it's approved. I think that you need, should restrict the hours, because it's a special use, we can put conditions on the special use, and one of those would be, you know, one truck delivery on the semis per day, and it's got to be done, you know, before, and I would lean on the police department to set the time, but it'd be pretty easy to ticket. We do a local ordinance, and if we see a truck there too early, they begin to ticket, and eventually we could pull the special use, so if they continue to violate it, we could actually pull the special use, which would pull their buil, uh, business license. In response to the chairman, I understand the concerns about, you know, protecting other businesses, but I think that's more of a, a market condition issue and, and not really a job of the city council. We don't know, Mark Auto Parts might, and they have been here a long time, he could retire in two years, and he could be gone. We have a jewel in town, if Dominix wants to fill in Georgetown Square and say, we want to put a Dominix across the street, are we going to say, well, Jewel's been here for a long time, we really don't want your sales tax, Dominix, we don't want to create competition in the area, so we can't have you there? I mean, it's not the city's job to create a monopoly or anything for the existing businesses. It's in the B, uh, B2 area for retail, we're going to generate some sales tax, I'm still not convinced on the traffic, I think we still have to hear some more on that, but otherwise, I would support the approval. Thank you.
Loyalty is a lost virtue. Mayor?
Just one other question, Roger. Didn't we approve an identical special use about 400 feet away at the Auto Zone place in a, in a B2 zoning district?
Yeah, correct, Mayor. The special use was approved, but if you could recall, with Georgetown, it was an existing special use with, which went with the property. So there was, there was less of a input and decision to be made. All, all we were particularly concerned with was, were concerns such as traffic and also whether or not everything would meet the criteria that, that we had requested, which they wound up doing. But that was the only difference within the, the two special uses. But we did, that was some years back, because there used to be an old track auto in Georgetown, if I can remember correctly. if I can remember correct.
Anything further? Now I'd make a motion to approve the special use and the three lot consolidation for the construction of an auto parts building for retail, warehouse, and office use, subject to the ingress and egress of the site be restricted to a right in, right out only, that the building be constructed to the presentation of November ninth, two thousand and six, its final review and approval of site, stormwater engineering by city engineer with adherence to all recommendations and corrections listed in the James J. Benison Engineering Report dated August sixteenth, two thousand and six, that the repair and ditch on the east side of the property be maintained as is, and then to direct the city attorney to draft the appropriate ordinance. Have a second?
Second and a couple additions. I'd like the approval, I'd like the approval to be subject to granting of the cross easement to the property, so the east and the west, and allowing enough room for that. I'd like to restrict the delivery hours for the crossroad trucks, as set by the Wooddale Police Department, and I know you kind of incorporated the design, but I think we should really incorporate the exact elevation and color scheme as presented in their, I don't know if this is dated, but the handout we got today.
Okay, motion agrees. Do a roll call, please.
Alderman Wesley?
No.
Alderman Winger?
No.
Alderman Suback?
Yes.
Alderman Shaki?
No.
Alderman Pysek?
No.
Alderman Coles?
Yeah.
Alderman Kneipe?
No.
Alderman Talme?
No.
Motion fails. Okay, the next item is the review discussion for the Gem Building Contractors' request for removal of the street blockade between Florina Court and Timber Court. As we know, we had the two subdivisions built that, at one point, we wanted to keep them separated, but now the petitioners have asked that we remove that separation for several reasons. We got approval from the city services, subject to engineering, the fire department said it would be in their best interest to do it, and the police department with the restriction of possible cut through traffic during peak backup down Wooddale Road, which they feel could be taken care of by some signage in that area. Roger, do you have anything, or Gary, anything that you would, or Chief Benowitz, do you have any, excuse me, anything you'd like to add to it? Andrew Williams?
Just, just one restriction, or what we'd like to have is the majority of the people who live on the street to agree to the opening, I think that would be important, and we, I know that as far as his buildings that he is putting up, they're in concurrence, but I haven't seen anything from the other people who live on Florina Court, as far as what they would like to see with that street, and I believe they were involved in making certain it was put in that way, to restrict the traffic as well. That would be the only other recommendation.
Can we talk about simple majority and vote on that?
Yeah, the majority of people who live on the street would agree to it, that would be one of the ways that, one of the staff recommendations.
Alderman Wesley?
Mr. Chairman, I believe a couple of people from Florina Court is here to address you on issues, what their concerns were on the last time this came, when the developer came through, so I would ask the chairman if they could approach and ask.
I think the petitioners here also, maybe the petitioner should testify as to why the request is being made, and then here, definitely hear from the residents if the chairman would so oblige.
We could accommodate both, will the petitioners please make their case, or?
Hello, my name is Earl Hoth, I'm one of the principals of Gem Building Contractors, and just to say a couple things about the, about the development, we were not the original developers of this project, we are just the builders of the twelve lot subdivision there. A year and a half ago, two years ago, when this came in front of you all, and through the other developers, it probably seemed like a good idea to have that blockade, or the berm, as I think, I think the engineering department called it a blockade, so for lack of better terms, we'll call it blockade, to have that there. Today, as we market our property, as we talk to customers that have come through, they have made numerous remarks on, why can't we get directly through to this street, why do we have to go around? So, with that in mind, that's one of the reasons that sparked us to come before you to discuss these things. After thinking about it, as a, as a home builder, the customers are, I guess, intend, and they're right, not only is it, is it a burden to, to the other streets that are adjacent, two to the, to the south and two to the north, all those streets go through currently right now, School Street, Forest View, Center, Commercial, all of those streets currently right now are from Wooddale Road to Grove. Florina Court slash Timber Court are the only, are the only street in that area that has this, this blockade. Not only the residents, I think that one of their concerns, I think, is also the emergency access, fire trucks, police personnel, they'd have to go all the way around, down Center, down one of the other streets to get to their location. If they're at that end, you know, they would have to continue all the way around and come back in, and it's basically two cul-de-sacs together, or dead ends together. Snow removal, instead of a snow plow truck coming straight through, going one, one way, one the other way to clear the street, they have to spend a little more time, they have to clean out that, that hammerhead, if you'd call it, at the end, because of course, we couldn't have snow piled up, you can't use that as a storage area, because from what I understand, when that was originally proposed and built there, it was built in such a fashion that an emergency vehicle, if absolutely necessary, would have to go through there. So, with that in mind, if you had snow piled up there, they couldn't get through. Those are some of the reasons why we've felt that taking away that blockade just would be, would be advantageous to us.
Alderman Pysek?
It's my understanding, some of the other problems are just been on the, and it's certainly not the city's burden, but as far as the project, there have been no sales over there yet, you have two built, and basically, as a development, it's not doing well over there, and this is a thought that maybe if it could be more visible from Wooddale Road, and they actually go straight through, that you could have a better time in not having this be open, empty spaced right now.
That is correct.
Alderman Pysek?
When you purchased the property from the original developer, were you aware at the time of the purchase that that was a dead end street?
Yes, we were, that that was a dead end street, that is correct, yes.
I don't want you to go any further than that, the fact of the matter was, that the original development would not have been approved unless he conceded to being a dead end street, and we're going along with the present residents that live on Florina Court. Sorry, you bought what is, I don't see you have any leeway to change what is, that's all.
Alderman Coles?
Being a dead end street like you have, I can take you over to Ward One and show you three streets that are dead end, that don't go through too, that have the same type of system that is there on Florina Court. If you wanna, I can name the streets, Dunley, Montrose, and Hyawatha.
That's true, sir, because we built those, that is correct, yes. We did Ashwood Development, and there is a blockade there, and we did that.
Yeah, so there is, there is areas in Wooddale that does have.
Of course, and you're, you're a hundred percent correct, and the reason, at that point, when we did that four or five years ago, if not more, we did that because Route eighty-three to Wooddale Road, nobody wanted that to become a thoroughfare. In this case, what you're dealing with is you have, you have Grove.
You have four streets that go through right now.
That is correct, sir.
It don't take you any longer than five minutes to go to your place, it's too bad you bought the property with no, the reason I think you're having trouble with it, is because there's no landscaping on the place, they took, they cut all the trees down, that thing was a beautiful tree place, and they cut all the trees down, and they made it look terrible, and people don't wanna live at a place that don't have any trees. Seriously, I, I know what I would do if I owned that place, I'd throw trees around and see if you could get, make it look a little better.
And that's possible, and we are going to put trees in, but under, during construction, if we put trees in, they're gonna, they're gonna, you can't drive bulldozers and equipment around those tree bases, they will kill the trees, so that's why we've kind of holding off for right now on the trees.
Put something in the back of the lots, that would help.
You're right, I mean, that's, that is something we could be doing, we, again, we didn't develop it, as you know, we're just coming to you at this point right now.
Alderman?
I think one of the things, one of the things you could do, maybe that would enhance it, is, you know, you don't necessarily have to put the trees in now, because I do understand, I mean, at this point, it would be senseless, because you put trees in, you gotta go back and knock them down when you're gonna put the houses in. What you could do, though, would be, take all the property that you don't have any homes on, level it out, and I know somebody suggested this to you already, but level it out, and throw, throw a cheap grass seed in there, you know, I mean, at least, when people come into the area to look at the homes, okay, they can look and they can see, at least see the grass, I mean, I'll be honest with you, for what the price you're asking, the fact that you're under flight path, okay, and the fact that I'm gonna buy a house over there for that kind of money, live under an air, you know, right in the direct line of the airplanes, and then look out my window at the stuff across the street, you know, I mean, be honest with you, I live across the street now, okay, and I have to look at that every day, and, and I, you know what, it looks like crap, it really does, and, you know, you guys have had to go out there this past summer, I think twice, to cut it, I'm the one that complained, okay, I'm the one that called, because we do have ordinances on it, but if you fixed it up, you know, and that's not that hard to do, I'm sure you guys got equipment, you bring a tractor and just level it, just grade it over, and just throw some grass seed in for now, until you're able to sell the properties, I mean, you know, or, or turn them over. As far as changing, you know, I know I was, either way, I voted against this thing from, from day one, okay, so at this point, I can't, I can't do anything about what, what is, but I'm not sold on the idea of, of really putting the road through, if, you know, if it's gonna impact the residents that live over there, and the residents, I know how they felt the last time, and I've talked to the new ones that are building now over there, they don't want it either, they don't want it to go through either, and I think at this point, it's like, it's not the responsibility of the city, okay, as, you know, Jim stated earlier, you know, you guys knew what you were getting, I mean, if you didn't, that's not our problem, if you didn't know what you were getting into, we're sorry, you know, we're sorry that, you know, the housing industry has gone south, you know, I mean, we can't help you with that, but that was a condition, and that was the one thing that, you know, and again, I voted, you know, both Alderman Wesley and myself were the only ones that voted against it to begin with, but, but it's like, oh, I'm sorry, and Alderman Coles, but, you know, what to change now, you know, it's kind of like, I'm sorry, conditions aren't good for you, and, you know, and I really am, but I don't know if, if it really would help you all that much, I mean, there are some things I think you could do just cosmetically, you know, and, and kind of on the cheap, you know, I mean, it's cheap grass seed, you know, throw that in, just level it out, I mean, make it look nice, at least, you know, so that you can try and at least sell the two you got there, you know, I honestly believe that you're gonna have a hard time, no matter what you do, you could open that road up, you could, you could, I just think you're gonna have a hard time, you know, my own personal opinion, but I couldn't, I can't support opening that road up, not if the neighbors don't want it, the existing people, because they're the ones that live there today, and, you know, I hate to say this, but again, here's a situation where you guys aren't gonna live there when it's all said and done, okay, these people, no, you're not, these people are, okay, that live there today are going to live there, or are building their homes there now, are the ones that are gonna live there, so I can't, you know, and, and good conscience, I can't justify, in my mind, to support opening it up.
Alderman Wesley, and then I'll open it to the audience.
Couple things, you said you have a heart of marketing this, where have you put your signs up, and, because I drove over that area, and all I see are these little tiny signs, but I'll tell you one thing, Polte came up here, and the new development, the condos being built by Georgetown, I mean, by Georgios, they had big signs on, in the front parkway of the streets on Saturdays and Sundays, and they are taken down, affected Monday, they off the street, okay? I don't think you have marketed this as well, because I don't know where you've been marketing it, okay? And, and the other thing is, a couple of concerns I have, we've been snow plowing that streets for so many years now, we haven't had that problem, okay? And the fire department, I understand, they sent you a letter, but I'm also a fireman for the department too, and you know what, we are so used to going around there anyways now, so it ain't gonna matter for that. The other, the other thing that, that I would consider for, for you, and if the council will agree, we allow a sign to go up by George, by Georgetown on the ComEd property, for those people, a temporary sign to try to move those condos. I'd like to know if the council will go along with, if they wanna put a big sign on the property that we own by the White Cottage, to try promote that for them, I would look into doing that, then Laney's Row will go through. I mean, if the council is willing to go that route, I'm willing to help you market it, in that perspective, the council will allow that to happen, and legally, I don't know if we could or not, we would have to ask them that. The other part is, maybe you need to contact the one that owns a property by the detention basin on Grove Street there, and maybe find out who owns that property, and see if you could put a sign on their property, I'm marketing that. The problem is, I just haven't seen hardly any of your signs out marketing that you got houses back there, and for me to approve this to go through, I was against this from the beginning with Dave, and, and first of all, there's a handicapped child with Down Syndrome that lives on that block, and that's the purpose why they bought on that block, because they knew it was a dead end street. A new developer bought that property across from that, and they bought because it was a dead end street, and I will not support going through the street. But I, I'm willing to work with, if the council is willing to work with you, and we get the approval here, I'm willing to help you market them in that perspective, but you would have to pay for the signs and do all that, but I'm willing to work that route, if the council will agree to that.
You want any of the, any comments? Okay, want any of the homeowners would like to address the issue? Is it, do you have one spokesperson, or would you just like to all individually comment? Okay, sir?
My name is Fred March, I live at one thirty-five Florina Court. First of all, I want to thank the council for allowing me to speak, and I appreciate the comments of the aldermen that did speak so far, because they are following up on, something that was passed two years ago, they agreed with our comments at that time. I just would like to make a couple more comments as far as marketing. First of all, in the, in a recent Crane Chicago Business article, it shows that this year, that sales have dropped in the suburban areas over twenty-one percent. article, it shows that this year, that sales have dropped in the suburban areas over 21%. There's also another part in the same article that says that sellers think it's 2005, but buyers think it's 1929. So unfortunately, for gem builders, they bought at a time when the housing market fell off to nothing. I submit that the reason the homes are not selling is not because that the street doesn't go through, because if that were part of the problem, then why aren't the two lots that are on Florina Court sold? And why aren't those houses built? So the thing is, it's all in how you market. We wanted to build there because it was a dead-end street. I personally have lived in this, in the city now. It was a village when I first lived here, first moved here, since 1957. I've lived in four different locations in the city. And the last one that I lived before, this present home, I had to back in my driveway at night because I couldn't pull it back out in the morning. And that was one of the big reasons why I moved to Florina Court. And I've enjoyed that for five years now. And I would hope that I could continue to enjoy that. The, as far as the advertising, I have to agree with Alderman Wesley. The only two signs that they have that say gem builders on it are on each side of the Timber Court right now. I have seen smaller signs at the, at the other side streets, but they've been gone for quite a while. If the city can help them market their properties by allowing them to put up signs, I'd be all for that. I'm happy to see those homes go up. But I think that possibly a bad business decision because of the timing of the housing, I don't think that that should be on our backs. And we want that for safety, and I think it should be maintained for safety. There's even been cases now, since that's been up, that's why the city had to put up barricades, because people that, who live in the west end of the development, past there in the side streets, were driving over the curbs. And people, even though it says dead-end street at Wooddale Road, people continue to fly down there until they realize that there's a curb, once they get about 50 feet away. So if there's nothing, God help the kids on that block. And that, another thing, as far as cut-through traffic, if people feel that they can get 50 feet ahead during rush hour traffic at night, they're gonna cut down whatever street they can to get 50 feet ahead. And I don't think that that should be on the safety of our children, or any of the other residents on our street. I thank you for your time.
Sir?
Hi, folks. My name's Dave Schmonic. I live at 123 Florina Court. Been there for 14 years, going on 15. We the original house there, no, we don't want the street changed. No, we don't want the dead-end changed. A couple of things that we need to clarify. Number one, I do have a disabled child, so I do appreciate the dead-end street. Two, and maybe Gary can clarify it, the emergency vehicles are able to get across that hammerhead there. It's been engineered so that they can drive across. So as far as the emergency vehicles getting down the street at any time, that can be done. That's my understanding, and that's how it was engineered. We do welcome people on the street. Obviously, Carl and Jerry and their families are coming up. We think that's great. We do want to have the development to the west, have houses and have people in it. We don't think it should be at the expense of our quality of life. That's the best way I can put it. And I hope you can remember how you voted before when we went through this two years ago. I really don't want to come up here again and go through it again, nor do I want to go through a situation later where maybe this developer, another developer wants to change the size of the lots, so that they're smaller, so they can develop more houses, or whatever. So if we could keep that in mind, that'd be great.
Sir?
My name's Carl Promian. I'll be a resident at 122 Florina Court. I became familiar with Florina Court because I knew the original developer who developed these 12 lots. And upon the developing of the 12 lots, at one time, he had promised Jerry and I two lots, which were the two lots that are on the cul-de-sac. And we were very excited about that, because it was gonna be a private street, and we would have privacy for the two homes that we wanted to build. Well, as it turned out, the developer soured on the deal and sold the 12 lots to gem builders. So under that premises, I approached the owner that owns the property that now Jerry and I own. And they asked if he would want to sell that property, with the sole intent of me and Jerry building two homes at the furthest west end of this property, for the sole purpose of the privacy, and being able to develop the piece into a lot that we could build the type of home we want to build. It happened, and we bought it. And we bought it because it's a dead-end street, it provides us with the privacy we want, it enables us to build the type of home we want. I hate to mention dollars, but we have invested in excess of $2 million to build our homes and purchase the land, specifically because it's a dead-end street. And I live in Wooddale, and I've lived here almost 20 years, and I watched the city council when Girardi, the developer, and you people asserted that that street was gonna remain a dead end. All I can say is that if I knew the street was gonna go through and still buy the property, I'd build my home further east, and not worry about the traffic. Well, that's not the situation. I can only offer one suggestion to gem builders. If I were gem builders, I would have built my two models on the two lots that are on our street. And with that, he might have been able to market his product better, and been able to enhance to the people that 11 additional or 10 additional homes will be built west of us. So on that assumption, I would just hope that the city council will understand that this street was dedicated to be a dead end, and we have made a substantial investment to come live there and live with the street so we could have the privacy that we want. Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience? If not, any further questions or comments from the council?
Excuse me, can I say something?
Sure.
My name's Timothy Saltis. I'm actually the marketer on this property. I'm the real estate broker. It's been around Wooddale for many years. And as far as the marketing of the property, in response to some of the things that some of the residents said, those two lots that are actually on Florina Court, one of them are actually sold. The reason why that one is sold is because they weren't interested in anything on the other side. So yes, it makes a huge difference for the marketing if that street doesn't go through. I understand when that was developed originally, they didn't own the whole street, so they had to put a cul-de-sac, and they had to put a dead end. I guess I'm here to represent the 10 people that haven't moved into those houses yet. And when they have to go all the way around three different streets to get back out to Wooddale Road, it doesn't make a lot of sense. From a development standpoint, when these, when these, as a village, when you're designing the town, you don't design a town with a bunch of dead ends that people can't drive around, and they have to drive three other blocks to get around to a street. It doesn't make a lot of traffic sense. I understand the fact, I lived on Deer Path Road for 15 years, and I bought the property because I loved the woods that...